And I'm calling this meeting to order. Welcome one, welcome all. And now I would like to call up Reverend Doug Saffsir, pastor of the Haygood United Massachusetts Church, to give us our invocation.
Let us pray. Almighty God, Creator of heaven and earth, bestow upon those who hold office in the Virginia Beach City Council your gifts of discernment and empathy, that with dedication to the common good they may faithfully serve in their offices to promote the betterment of the people of this city. We offer this prayer in the name of Christ our Savior. Amen.
Amen. And if we may, bow our heads and have a moment of silence for all of those who paid the ultimate price for our nation and our city. Pledge of allegiance.
By my pledge of allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, liberatory, and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, do we have a roll call?
Yes, Your Honor, all present, excluding Councilmember Rouse.
Okay. At this point, we did not have a closed session, therefore we will move on. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes of the special formal session of November 26, 2024, formal session of November 26, 2024, and the informal, informal sessions of December 3, 2024?
So moved.
Second. Okay.
The vote is open.
Okay, great.
By a vote of 10 to 0, you approve the minutes as submitted.
Okay, thank you. At this point, we're going to have a special mayor's presentation on behalf of our entire council with a revolution, resolution. Could we have John Henry Doucette come forward, please? Yep, just step right up. You're in the spotlight tonight, yeah. Welcome to the club. All right. John, it's an honor that we, as a council, present this to you and many of the folks that you have been associated with. Whereas the Princess Anne Independent News, a community newspaper based in rural Virginia Beach, has faithfully served the communities of Virginia Beach and nearby areas since its inaugural publication on April 24, 2015, providing invaluable local news, opinion, and photography about public affairs and community life. And whereas the Princess Anne Independent News was founded by John Henry Doucette, a distinguished journalist and U.S. Navy veteran, who established the newspaper through the Punggol Publishing Company, LLC, to address the decline in journalism during the digital age and elevate the level of local reporting. And whereas, for nearly a decade, the Princess Anne Independent News has maintained a rigorous publishing schedule of 25 editions per year and expanded its distribution network to include Kempsville, the oceanfront, and areas of the central city, growing its biweekly publication from approximately 3,700 to over 6,300 copies per edition and offering free access to readers while being sustained entirely through advertising revenue. And whereas the newspaper has pursued a mission of engaging citizens in civic life, community, and culture by delivering news of interest to people of Virginia Beach, fostering open dialogue and providing a platform for diverse ideas and perspectives. And whereas amid the decline of legacy local media, the Princess Anne Independent News has expanded its public affairs coverage to include critical topics such as local elections, campaign financing, land use, recurrent flooding, and changes to the Virginia Beach's voting system, offering in-depth analysis and annual nonpartisan voter guides to inform and empower the electorate. And whereas the newspaper has been recognized for its commitment to diversity, civic responsibility, freedom of expression, open government, and strong communities, with a particular focus on agricultural and rural life, earning accolades from the Virginia Beach Press Association, Virginia Beach Excellence in Agricultural Committee, and Virginia Farm Bureau Federation. And whereas the Princess Anne Independent News has been a collaborative endeavor with contributors from talented writers, editors, designers, and photographers, including Glenn Mason, Michael Kennedy, Dr. Karen Beardsley-Kwazny, Jim Roberts, Jim Bloodswor Row, Dennis Hardick, John Wilson, Charles Apple, Courtney Morris Duquette, Rick Friday, and David Hollingsworth, whose collective work has enriched the publication's content and impact. And whereas in 2022, the newspaper furthered its commitment to community engagement by publishing a book on sustainable farming and gardening, reflecting the deep connection to rural life and stewardship. And whereas, after a decade of exemplary service to Virginia Beach and its communities, the Princess Anne Independent News has announced it will produce its final print edition on December 15, 2024, leaving behind a legacy of journalistic excellence and civic engagement. Now therefore be it resolved by this council, the City of Virginia Beach, Virginia, that the Virginia Beach City Council formally honors the Princess Anne Independent News for its extraordinary contributions to journalism, its unwavering dedication to serving the people of Virginia Beach, and role in fostering informed and engaged citizenry, given by the City, the Council of the City of Virginia Beach, Virginia, the 10th day of September 2024, and present this resolution duly signed by each member of Virginia Beach City Council. Thank you, John. Now you get to get photographed.
Is that definitely?
Yes.
What do you say some words?
Thank you. I'd like to think I'm the most uncomfortable person in a suit. I get nervous talking, so I wrote this down. It won't be long. To the mayor and the vice mayor, members of the city council, the city manager and staff, I am grateful for this. This is very, very kind. And there are a lot of people that I should thank, but I'm going to talk about Dolly Parton. She is not from Virginia Beach, and that is not her fault. But she has a song called "Code Many Colors," and in it, a mom sews her child something out of a box of rags. Any of you know that song? Check it out, it's pretty good. So the song's about making the best that you can out of what you have, and it's also about not being ashamed to put that work over your shoulders and wear it with pride. That song is about love. So we made the Princess Anne Independent News with love, and we made it with our hands. We never had money, and it came at a cost to my family, but we did it because local journalism made in and about Virginia Beach should exist. I know there were a lot of times where you could see the seams, imperfect stitches, plaid fabric, kind of all jammed up weird next to some polka dots, but we made it as well as we could for as long as we could do it. So I'm proud of our newspaper, but we need clear eyes as a city now that it's done. It was imperfect and limited. Virginia Beach needs more than the independent news ever provided. We need a lot better, too, than that one lonely full-time reporter our local daily newspaper, the Virginian Pilot, has around here. So our stories should be told, and what we did at the Independent News was patchwork. But I hope the folks in our community can look past that and see the greater whole. Community is about celebrating how different we are while having some faith in common decency that binds us to greater purpose, and I like to think that we should see that whole, too. At our best, a little newspaper made down the road in the southern city reminded us that challenges are also opportunities to make lives better. Even what seems humble can have a use and a meaning. And for what it's worth, all the best songs are about love, wanting it, losing it, finding it, and when we are lucky, sharing it with someone who loves us back. And for that, I thank my family, and I thank Courtney, and again, I thank all of you.
Thank you, John. Thank you, family. Okay, as we get into the public hearings and other parts of the agenda, I will read the script for speakers. I want to remind everyone that the city council speaker policy that allows certain representatives or group to speak for 10 minutes applies only to planning items. All other speakers, whether speaking individually or on behalf of a group, will have up to three minutes to speak on a single item. Speakers are reminded that comments during the formal session of the meeting must be limited to the subject of the item that is being considered by the council at the time you are called. For items placed on the consent agenda, the speaker will have up to three minutes to address any single item. If a speaker wishes to address multiple consent agenda items, the speaker will have a cumulative of six minutes to address those items. Again, the speaker must limit his or her comments to the subject matter of the items they have signed up to address. And finally, I call upon all speakers and all persons in the chamber to be civil in their discussions and decorum. Whatever views you hold and wish to express, the city council wants to hear from you and to ensure that all viewpoints and persons are respected. The best way to do this is for all of us to strive for civility and respect. Okay, we'll go on to the public hearings, and the first one will be Declaration and Conveyance of City Property, 1.54 acre property and 1,600, 16,500 square foot structure and all improvements located in 2656 La Shell Place.
We have one speaker, James Moore. James Moore. He is not responding. So that's all the speakers.
Okay, the next public hearing, Declaration and Conveyance of Excess City Property, a property 3.1 acres, a city-owned property located at the intersection of Princess Anne Road and Community College Place.
The first speaker is James Moore, who did not respond. The next speaker is Teresa Stanley. And then after Ms. Stanley will be Kay Flora.
Welcome, Teresa.
Good to see you, Mayor. Good evening, and congratulations to Councilperson Rouse on the birth of a baby. That's exciting. I am Teresa Stanley, Virginia Beach resident, advocacy chair for the Beach Community Partnership, and a member of the Affordable Housing Collaboration of IAB. And I'm proud to be standing here before you as a longtime former commissioner of your Virginia Beach Human Rights Commission on this eve of December 10, which is International Human Rights Day. Housing is a human right. Many of us are here to thank you for the decision that you will make tonight to move forward to support the conveyance of excess city property located at Princess Anne Road and Community College Place, a perfect site for the VBCDC NAMI Affordable Housing Project, which will provide 60 units of affordable housing with 15% of them allocated for those living with mental health challenges. The project will include space for the NAMI office, which provides vital mental health services to our entire community, free of charge. Any city in our region would love to house this treasure, and we are beyond grateful that Virginia Beach is getting this opportunity. Virginia Beach Community Development Corporation is an ideal local housing provider developer in this project. This journey has not been short, and I do want to take a minute to affirm the dedication of Councilmen Michael Berluci and Worth Remick for working with the community to address the affordable housing needs of our city with due diligence, hard work, and concern for all. We need the right kind of affordable housing in all districts in Virginia Beach. It's critical that every citizen be invited to be in partnership in community consultation, collaboration, and expertise sharing in the process so that the concerns like public transit, design fit for neighborhoods, proximity to city services, and other concerns are always taken into account. The process may not have been perfect, but it was intentional and steadfast in its effort to address the affordable housing deficit with a result that we can all be proud of. I want to conclude by taking just a moment to remember and honor Tim McCarthy, a decades-long affordable housing advocate and whole-filled partner, who was always determined and committed to the mission of providing housing for all in this city. Tim is no longer physically present with us, but his spirit lives on in all of us who continue this critical work. We know how proud Tim was of this particular effort. Thank you for your yes vote.
Appreciate it very much, Teresa. Thank you.
The next speaker is Kay Flora. And then Jennifer Williams.
Welcome.
Thank you. Mayor Dyer, Vice Mayor Wilson, members of city council, I'm Kay Flory, a dedicated citizen of Virginia Beach and the advocacy chair of the Interfaith Alliance at the beach. Additionally, I am part of the leadership team for the Tidewater Sowers of Justice. Our organizations collaboratively address social justice and human rights issues within our community, guided by compassion and nonpartisan advocacy. We strongly support the conveyance of the city-owned property located at Princess Anne Road and Community College Place. This site is ideal for the development of affordable housing and supportive housing for individuals with mental health challenges, as envisioned by the partnership between VBCDC and NAMI. The property's ample acreage and proximity to medical facilities make it a suitable location for this project. We urge the city to expedite the conveyance of this property to facilitate the development of 45 to 60 apartments, which will significantly address the housing needs of Virginia Beach citizens. Thank you for your consideration.
Thanks for coming.
The next speaker is Jennifer Williams. Jennifer Williams. After Ms. Williams is Max Willie.
Good evening.
Hello. Thank you all very much for being receptive to hearing about the housing that we want to build. I am the affiliate director and the program director for NAMI Coastal Virginia, and I take a lot of the phone calls that come into the office, and I want to tell you how heart-wrenching they are. These are people, people call who maybe have just gotten out of the hospital, and they're not able to work. They may be on Medicaid or Medicare, and they need housing. They need somewhere to be, to be able to recover and to prosper. I know that some of you all may never have had any experience with either yourselves with mental illness, or a family member, or a close, close loved one. I want to tell you that they are people who are struggling. They are people who want to make a contribution to society, but you really can't ask somebody with mental illness to be able to work continually or support themselves in any way. Some people are not able to do that. I live with mental illness. I live with depression and anxiety, and I'm one of the lucky people, you know, that can work and flourish, frankly, with it. But there are people out there who can't, and you cannot expect anybody to be able to survive and flourish if they don't have a place to live, you know? I mean, if this were your son, or your daughter, or your mother, or your father, I think that you would understand the dilemma that some people have. I had a phone call from a mother today who said, "I'm elderly. I don't know how much longer I'm going to be here. I have a son who lives with mental illness, and I want to make sure he's taken care of. I want to make sure that he's not going to be out on the street." I've had a mother's father, sister's brother's call, son from out of town saying, "I have someone who lives with mental illness, and I want to, I can't be there physically, but I want to make sure that this loved one is provided for." So I want to just say, too, that if you, you wouldn't expect for somebody with a chronic physical condition to be able to take care of themselves. They're going to need support, right? Well, the same thing for people with mental illness. They, it is a, it's a physical illness of an organ in your body, just like diabetes is. It's just not as, it's not as well-known, I guess, as, as other physical illnesses. I think by having this housing...
Thank you very much, ma'am.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Max Willie, and then Seth Quick.
Good evening.
Greetings, Honorable Mr. Mayor and city council members. My name is Max Willie, and I currently serve as vice president and chair of advocacy for the local affiliate of the National Alliance on Mental Illness for Coastal Virginia. I am truly honored to be here in your presence this evening. We are here to show uniform support for the city council agenda item to release that 3.18 acre parcel of land for the development of affordable housing. That includes units set aside for those living with mental health conditions. Affordable and attainable housing for those with mental health conditions has been a top priority within our affiliate and has been discussed over the past five years as an advocacy priority with local and state legislators at the Virginia General Assembly. The parcel of land under consideration is perfectly suited along the city's main transportation thoroughfare that has full access to the Hampton Roads Transit System, within one mile access to critical medical services offered by Centerra Princess Anne Hospital Complex and CHKD Healthcare Centers, is within walking distance to the adult educational opportunities of Tidewater Community College and the Virginia Beach Higher Educational Center on University Drive. Please note that HRT has five designated routes that services TCC in Virginia Beach. And additionally, this site has access to major shopping venues to include Target, Walmart, Home Depot, Walgreens, and many others. If approved, this location will serve as the NAMI Coastal Virginia affiliate headquarters that will allow us to better serve the citizens of Virginia Beach and our community through free educational services and support groups and individual families experiencing mental health conditions. Your approval is the right step on a long-awaited transition of ending the stigma of mental illness. Your approval tangibly demonstrates respect to those living with mental conditions as your valued constituents that work and earn wages, are law-abounding, and are registered voters. And most importantly, your approval will help save lives, reduce homelessness, and recidivism for those seeking to live normal and productive lives in an affordable community. NAMI Coastal has worked with the nonprofit Virginia Beach Community Development Corporation for several years to bring this idea to fruition. I would like for those in the audience to please stand for anyone who supports this Our ask, vote to approve this action on January 7, and let's demonstrate our commitment to affordable housing and mental health parity for our citizens in Virginia Beach. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
The next speaker is Seth Quick. Seth Quick. After Mr. Quick is David Crane.
Good evening, Mayor, city council members. My name's Seth Quick. I'm a resident of District 9 and a member of the Bayfront Advisory Commission, though I'm speaking here as a private citizen. I represent a group called YMB Hampton Roads that is a pro-housing advocacy group with nearly 1,000 members across the 757, and we are here tonight urging council strongly to please support the conveyance of this property. Hampton Roads, according to a recent General Assembly study, is over 50,000 units of affordable housing, is short over 50,000 units of affordable housing. Virginia Beach does take up a nice chunk of that, nearly 10,000, I believe, at the last count. Though this project is only 60 units, it is 60 units in the right direction to get closer to filling the gap between affordable, the available supply of affordable and attainable housing for our workforce, for people suffering from mental illness, and making Virginia Beach a city that businesses can grow and thrive in, where families can live, and people have access to the housing that they need. So, you know, just asking council to please consider that tonight, and thank you. Appreciate it.
Thanks a bunch for coming.
The next speaker is David Crane. And after Mr. Crane is Jessica Guglielmo.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor Wilson, and members of city council. My name is David Crane. I am chairman of the Board of Directors of the Virginia Beach Community Development Corporation. I'm here tonight speaking on behalf of the entire ward of directors to urge you to vote in favor of the site option agreement for the VBC NAMI development project. As you're acutely aware, many of our local employers face a significant challenge, simply their employees live too far away from work because they can't afford to live closer. And I don't mean, it's just not private employers, it's the city, it's school staff and employees that have this, that face this challenge. This project is directly aimed at closing the gap. This project targets individuals earning up to 80% of the area median income, which includes our essential workforce, hotel staff, retail workers, administrative personnel, teachers, first responders, the list goes on and on. The 2024 Virginia Beach Housing Study, which this was commissioned by the city, highlighted the urgent need for attainable rental housing. This type of housing is critical if we want to retain our workforce and decrease the number of households severely cost burdened by rent. The study revealed some troubling truths, that 59,000 households are paying well over 30% of their monthly income towards rent. Such an outlay for housing is not sustainable for our essential workforce. Moreover, workers in eight of the city's top 10 professions can't afford rent in Virginia Beach. Our project aims to close this gap by providing affordable and quality rental housing for those who serve our community daily. For the city to remain economically attractive to businesses, we must tackle this issue head-on for both renters and home buyers. While this project, of course, won't by itself solve the problem, it is a step in the right direction. As Mark Twain famously said, "The secret of getting ahead is getting started." This is the start to fixing that problem. On behalf of the VBCDC board, I want to thank you for your past support of the organization, and I want, and I ask you respectfully to vote in favor of the site option agreement tonight. Thank you very much.
Hey, thanks for coming. Really appreciate it.
The next speaker is Jessica Guglielmo, and then Eric Castano.
Good evening. Thank you for hearing me this evening. I'm Jessica Guglielmo, president and CEO of Virginia Beach Community Development Corporation, and I'm here this evening to speak in support of the property conveyance for the development of attainable housing. Our project proposes to develop four rent housing... Our project proposes to develop four-rant housing for 60 households with a set aside of 15% of homes for persons with a mental health disability. If approved, this development will also provide commercial office space for NAMI. VBCDC and NAMI have been working together for the past four years to locate a suitable site. Five sites, both privately-owned parcels and publicly-owned parcels, were evaluated throughout the city. This three-acre parcel, located at the corner of Princess Anne Road and Community College Place, best meets our project needs due to the following reasons. The land is developable, and it includes the appropriate amount of acreage. It's located within a quarter mile to public transit. It's located close to medical, retail, recreation, grocery, education, and employment opportunities. It provides excellent frontage for NAMI's office and is a convenient location for citizen access to NAMI's free programs and services. The site is not impacted by military ACOs zones, and upon initial assessment, the site appears to be compatible for rezoning. And also, from a financing and funding perspective, the site is compatible. Each day, VBCDC receives phone calls and inquiries from persons in need of affordable housing. There is simply not enough affordable housing to go around. Upon reading through some of the letters of support that VBCDC received in favor of this project, one writer commends the city for championing affordable housing efforts and urges the city to act favorably on this project. She further states that affordable housing is needed in our district, District 10, to support workforce and retirees. In another letter of support, a business owner in District 10, whose business is adjacent to the site being considered, supports this location and development, indicating this project will help to fill a real need for workforce housing. And lastly, in a third letter, the writer states that she used to be a Virginia Beach resident, but housing prices, both for rent and for sale, caused her to move outside of our city. She further states that there are eight homes in the cul-de-sac in which she resides, and all eight households commute from Suffolk to Virginia Beach for work. This speaks to the very essence of the need for more affordable housing options in our city, and we respectfully request a favorable vote, and thank you for your consideration and support.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you coming.
The next speaker is Eric Castano. And after Mr. Castano is Courtney Jarvis.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Eric Castano. I am a resident of VBCDC Housing, and I'm a person that works, that lives in affordable housing. And I'm here to speak to you guys about affordable housing in Virginia Beach that offers numerous benefits, including reduced housing costs, increased financial independence, and access to support services like education, counseling, job training, and healthcare. The city's affordable housing initiatives aim to provide safe and healthy living environments for low-income individuals and families. The need for affordable housing in Virginia Beach, particularly in District 10, urges the council to approve the sale of this excess city property for the project. The project would provide affordable rental housing and community services, including permanent supportive housing for individuals with mental illnesses that have health diagnosis. My concern about the lack of affordable housing in Virginia Beach is to highlight the impact on seniors, workforce, and hard-working individuals, and I commend the City Council for recognizing the need of affordable housing, and I urge the council to take action by supporting the VBCDC-NAMI attainable housing and the benefits of creating a community where people can live and work, strengthening the local economy. I also stress that safe affordable housing should be a right and not a luxury, and encourages the City Council to prioritize this housing policy and allocate resources for the housing development. Thank you very much.
Appreciate you coming.
The next speaker is Courtney Jarvis. Courtney Jarvis. Shayla Smith. Eugene Cohen. And then after Mr. Cohen, we have one WebEx speaker.
Welcome. How you doing?
I'm doing pretty good, Mr. Mayor. To this wonderful council, we just want to greet you on this evening. And I just come to be in support of this affordable housing initiative. To the ladies and gentlemen and all the esteemed colleagues that are here, tonight I stand before you to address an issue that strikes at the very heart of our city's identity: affordable housing. This is not merely a matter of policy, but it's human dignity that is on the line, the community's well-being, our collective future in Virginia Beach. In every corner of our cities, families are struggling. They're dealing with difficult decisions. They're working hard, have multiple jobs, and yet still find it increasingly difficult to secure a home that's both safe and affordable. The dream of homeownership, or even renting a modest apartment, is slipping out of the reach of many of our residents. This is not just an economic crisis, it's a belonging crisis. We are a city that prides itself on economic empowerment and opportunity. Yet, how can we complain to support these values when so many of our neighbors are forced to choose between paying rent and putting food on the table? Or even living within our city limits? How can we call ourselves a progressive city when we allow the rising cost of housing to push out the very people who contribute to this vibrant community and economy? So I challenge you on tonight, council. I challenge you, Mr. Mayor, to not only support this project, but look for opportunity to make housing more affordable in Virginia Beach. It's not just about the numbers, it's about lives. When we expand our zoning laws to allow for more affordable housing, we not only provide shelter, we foster community, stability, families strive, children have a safe place to grow, and our neighborhoods become more vibrant and dynamic, reflecting the ethos of the compassion that makes Virginia Beach a very special city. So I challenge you, and I know this is a daunting chat, but the concerns and the impact on the property values, on the character of our neighborhoods, will not only be improved and enhanced by affordable housing, but by your vote, it's going to make Virginia Beach a place that all citizens and all workers can find a place to live. So let me close with this. Let the city officials, community leaders, residents forge a path that prioritizes affordable housing. Let us advocate for policies that reflect the values of our compassion and inclusivity, and we can create a city that's going to go beyond 2040 comprehensive plan to impact generations, because Virginia Beach is the city that's going to lead, the tip of the spear, to making changes in Virginia Beach. So I pray for you and encourage you. God bless.
The last speaker is WebEx, Liam Hudson. You are unmuted and may begin.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. My name is Liam Hudson, and I am a Senior Program Manager with the Corporation for Supportive Housing. I'm here to speak in strong support of the proposed 60-unit development in Virginia Beach proposed by Virginia Beach Community Development Corporation and NAMI. As you have heard several times tonight, this development will provide much-needed housing for low-income individuals living with serious mental illness. I urge you to move forward with the conveyance of the aforementioned acres. According to 2022 data, nearly 1,300 units are needed in the Virginia Beach region to meet the housing needs of low-income individuals facing these challenges. Permanent supportive housing is a proven, evidence-based intervention that provides stability and dignity to people who experience homelessness and are cycling through our crisis systems. At CSH, we've seen time and time again how PSH transforms lives and communities by breaking the cycle of crisis and creating lasting housing solutions. Consider this: in 2024, the collective budget for crisis services, including state jails, hospital systems, emergency response systems, and mental health programs, exceeds $600 million throughout the state. These systems are overwhelmed, both statewide and regionally. Permanent supportive housing has been shown to significantly reduce the burden on these systems. By integrating housing with supporting services, we are preventing reoccurring crises and supporting community members in achieving long-term stability. As a member of CSH, a personal witness to the thoughtful planning on behalf of both NAMI and VBCDC, and the administrator of $300,000 in pre-development funding for this project, I'm proud to champion this initiative because it aligns with our shared values and the values that I've seen represented within your community. This development is more than just housing, it is a lifeline. It is a tangible investment in the health, safety, and vibrancy of your community of Virginia Beach. The strength of your community lies in your ability to care for your most vulnerable members. By supporting this development, we ensure that those individuals at risk have the greatest access to care and the stability that they deserve. This project helps to create a Virginia Beach where everyone has the opportunity to thrive. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mayor, that's all the speakers for the public hearing.
Okay. Do we have any single speakers for the consent agenda?
Let me just call his name again, James Moore. So no, sir, he's not responding, so we do not have any single speaker, single-person speaker on that item.
Madam Clerk, is there a single speaker on Grace Bible?
There are two. The applicant's representative, and then one other person who signed up.
Okay, because I have on here James Moore, and then...
We have another individual...
You have another one?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Mayor, consent agenda?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Under ordinances and resolutions, number one is the ordinance to dissolve the in-house pharmacy expository committee. Number two is the ordinance to dissolve the urban agriculture advisory committee. Number three is the ordinance to authorize the acquisition of temporary easements, either by agreement or condemnation, Ray the Violet Bank Trail Project, CIP 100558. Number four is the ordinance to authorize the acquisition of property in fee simple and acquisition of temporary and permanent easements, either by agreement or condemnation, Ray the North Hampton Boulevard and Baker Road Pedestrian Crossing Improvements, Project CIP 10423.091. Number five is the ordinance to dissolve as exempt from local property taxes, Ray NAMI Deeds. Number six, the ordinance to designate as exempt from local property taxes, Ray My Favorite Charity Events Organization, LLC. Seven is the ordinance to designate as exempt from local property taxes, Ray Fite CF Foundation. Number eight is the ordinance to designate as exempt from local property taxes, Ray KAZN Adaptive Trainings, Inc. Number nine is the ordinance to designate as exempt from local property taxes, Ray Aid Another. Number 10 is the ordinance to designate as exempt from local property taxes, Ray Healing of the Soul Ministry. Number 11 is the ordinance to designate as exempt from local property taxes, Ray Stilst, Inc. Number 12 is the ordinance to designate as exempt from local property taxes, Ray the Allentown Bay Cliff Recreation Center, Inc. Number 13 is the ordinance to designate as exempt from local property taxes, Powerful Living Ministry. Number 14, this is to be deferred until January 7th, the ordinance to designate as exempt from local property taxes, Ray Pride Industries. Number 15 is the ordinance to amend Chapter 7, Article 3 of the City Code, Ray seizure, impound, and disposition of an unlawfully operated all-terrain vehicle or off-road motorcycle operated on a highway or sidewalk within the city. Number 16 is the ordinance to amend the City Code, Section 21-230, Ray traffic calming at Culver Lane. Number 17 is the resolution to authorize the city manager to make administrative preparation to Emergency Medical Services compassionate billing program. Number 18 is ordinance to amend the 2024 Housing Choice voucher administrative plan and authorize the city manager to execute the amended plan. Number 19 is the ordinance to appropriate $30,531,524 from the FY 2023-24 School Reversion Funds to the Virginia Beach City Public Schools FY 2024-25 Operating Capital Improvement Program, CIP, requested by the school board.
Open a public hearing on planning?
Number one is CNC Development Company, Inc., for a variance to Section 4.4(c)(1) of subdivision regulations, Ray subdivide the 15,000-square-foot site into three lots for the construction of three single-family dwelling units at 6502 Atlantic Avenue and 203 and 205 65th Street, District 6. Number two is the Tide Water Structures, LLC, Matthew R. Scornev Fachi, for a change in nonconformity, Ray the expansion of an existing dwelling at 514 Ninth Street, District 5. Number three is Centerra Virginia Beach General Hospital, Centerra Hospital, for a change in nonconformity, replace and reconstruct the existing main entrance sign at 1060 First Collier Road, and that's District 6. Number four is Centerra Independence, MPB, Inc., for a change in nonconformity, Ray replace and reconstruct the existing main entrance sign at 800 Independence Boulevard, and that is District 9. Number six is Franklin Group Companies, LLC, TAA Corporate Center Office Properties, LLC, for a conditional change of zoning from B2 community business to conditional O2 office district and a conditional use permit, Ray housing for seniors and disabled persons, and a variance to Section 4.4(b) of the subdivision regulations for a portion of 5366 Virginia Beach Boulevard, and that is in District 4. Number seven is Tiffany Corey Brown, First Thurston, LLC, for a conditional use permit, Ray daycare center at 5701 Thurston Avenue, Suite 103, and that is in District 4. Number eight is JD Enterprises, VA LLC, DBA Atlantic Rental Homes, Lay X U, for a conditional use permit, Ray short-term rentals at 903 Pacific Avenue, Unit C, and that is District 5. Number nine is Charles Young and Charles A. Young, for a conditional use permit, Ray short-term rentals at 933 Pacific Avenue, Unit D, District 5. And 10, Lakewood Home Builders, MA Investments, LLC, for a conditional use permit, Ray indoor recreational facility at 2,000 Virginia Beach Boulevard, District 6, move for approval.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Yes. Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, just really briefly, you know, we're about to let this moment go by, and I just wanted to give the council a nod, the community of advocates a nod, and the applicant for L6 a nod. And we just quietly have 180 units of affordable housing on the agenda tonight. And considering that is the number-one priority besides flooding of this council, I think it's worth taking a second and just kind of thinking about that. And this is the most I've ever seen on one agenda, and I've been watching a long time. So thank you for everybody who came out, and thank you for the opportunity and experience up here.
Okay, thank you. Okay, let's open the vote.
The vote is open.
To approve the consent agenda.
Councilmember Wooten, may I have your vote, please?
Fortunately, I'd have to say yes to the vote, but on my computer, I don't have the agenda. Somehow, it's disappeared.
Okay.
But I do approve.
Thank you. I'll take it as a verbal yes. By a vote of 10 to 0 with Councilmember Wooten's verbal yes vote, the consent agenda has been read by... Approved by... Sorry. Approved as read by Vice Mayor Wilson.
Okay.
I've been pushing it and pushing it. It's yes, but...
Well, we had yes votes on there. Did it record? It was 10 to 0, yes.
Okay. Okay.
So we have one other item?
Okay, we have one item. Grace Bible Church, Virginia Beach, Inc., for modification conditions for a conditional use permit, Ray reduce the size of building and parking area and modify the site layout of the parcel directly south of 2285 London Bridge Road, District 5.
The applicant's representative, Eddie Burdon.
Hey, Eddie, how you doing?
I'm doing well, Mayor Dyer. Thank you very much. Counsel, for the record, Eddie Burdon, Virginia County Attorney, representing the applicant. I believe this was going to probably be on the consent agenda, so I'll keep this brief. I want to also indicate Matt Love, who will be the campus pastor for this campus for Grace Bible Churches in attendance, even though his wife is expecting any time now. So again, another reason for me to be brief. The 11 conditions recommended to you all by your... The 11 conditions recommended to you all by your planning commission and your planning staff are all acceptable to Grace Bible. With this request, the original use permit on this 14-acre agriculturally zoned property, that original use permit that's in place today involved a 45,000-square-foot sanctuary with 437 parking spaces located further back on the property, closer to the residential neighborhoods, and the stormwater circumstances that I know Councilwoman Henley and I think most of you all are aware of, in this subcatchment area, this property has, it was a Smith family's farm for decades and decades, has been put upon by stormwater coming from London Bridge Road, public stormwater in major storms. As a result, Grace Bible has significantly reduced the size of its footprint to a 26,000-square-foot building on, again, a 14-acre parcel with less than half the parking originally planned at 214 spaces. There's about a 4-acre wooded area on the western end of the property that, from stormwater standpoint, has great benefits, that was never going to be touched with the previous plan and will not be touched with this plan. The landscaping buffer adjacent to the residential area remains strong and as it was originally, even though we're not building and filling up and creating under-parking stormwater storage, because it would be well over a million dollars, and it really would probably not get approved under the stormwater subcatchment that we have. So this is a reduction, we're moving it forward to reduce the amount of impervious surface, which is being reduced by 50%, and the building's not changing other than being smaller. If you have to answer any questions.
Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Have a wonderful Christmas. Thank you, Ms. Wooten and Mr. Taylor, for your wonderful service. Appreciate having had a chance to work with all of you all, and again, have a great holiday.
Thank you.
James Moore was also registered for this item, as well as Michelle Cleveland.
Okay, welcome.
Esteemed members of city council, my name is Michelle Cleveland. I'm the owner of 2285 London Bridge Road. The three-acre property I own now was vacant during the previous rounds of city approval, so this is the first and only opportunity I have to voice my concerns to you. Stormwater management and flood control are hot-button issues for the city and its taxpaying citizens, as evidenced by your recent session and coverage in the news. Therefore, this project is a timely example of how you, as city leaders, are going to guide development responsibly in the Southern Rivers watershed management area. I respectfully ask that you defer approval of the CUP until stormwater runoff impacts to my property are addressed and incorporated into the conceptual plan. Yes, this project has been shifted to my property. This modification as presented does not address how the substantial runoff from the proposed parking lot and entrance way directly abutting my property will be handled. Figure 1 shows my property boundary with the church property, it is substantial. The permit conditions require conformance to the conceptual plan, but the plan does not address this aspect of the project. At the planning hearing, Mr. Burdon stated that my concerns were not valid as, quote, "water doesn't run uphill," unquote. Figure 2 clearly shows the existing elevations of the field slated for the proposed parking lot as it slopes downwards towards my property, so you can see why I am concerned. During the same planning hearing, Mr. Burdon said that London Bridge Road was inadequately constructed during its widening to handle stormwater runoff. Therefore, it seems directing stormwater runoff to that area where it abuts my property is something that needs more detailed analysis now, not later. All stormwater runoff from the conversion of four acres of pervious to nonpervious surface will not be handled by a couple of stormwater ponds located on the other side of the project. I was further belittled at the planning hearing when told by a commission member that my ducks should want the extra water. Please know that I'm a cancer survivor, and being alive to use my property is an answered prayer. Please know that being flooded out is more than an inconvenience. I've spent thousands of hours building poultry pens, beehives, as well as aviaries for the rehabilitation of wild birds, so flooding caused by this project would be soul-crushing. I ask you to consider my concerns fairly and with decency. I've spoken with the city stormwater engineer, who told me that runoff is addressed through modeling of proposed conditions using 10-year storm events. I'm not sure if that's adequate. She is aware of my concerns, and I want you to be too. I look forward to having good neighbors, but I want a good project. Can you completely assure me that this project is presented?
Thank you, appreciate it. Thank you very much for coming. Mr. Burdon?
Sorry, I have to speak.
Is there another speaker?
There are no additional speakers.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, Ms. Cleveland's quote is out of context. We must drain this property away from London Bridge Road. The London Bridge Road is what's uphill. That's why our water isn't going to drain uphill. It has to go uphill to get across, after we properly grade so that we don't put any water onto Ms. Cleveland's property, which we cannot, and again, her property is zoned. Agriculture, as this is, it's not a residential property. And the water that comes, that the subcatchment models show, in a heavy storm event, water comes out of the public system in London Bridge Road and goes through Ms. Cleveland's property, our property, the property along London Bridge Road to the east of our 160 feet of frontage, and that is the water that we have to contain on our site. We cannot put our water onto Ms. Cleveland's site, and the engineering will not allow that to happen. We're not in any way attempting to have that happen. So we will not be causing flooding to Ms. Cleveland's property. Flooding will occur on Ms. Cleveland's property, if it does, from water coming out of the public stormwater system within London Bridge Road, which VDOT did many years ago. Captain Anthony.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question.
Okay. Okay. Question? Rosemary?
So the Grace Bible folks came and visited me probably about a year ago, maybe longer, and they were concerned about the stormwater, that they were going to have to treat all of the water that was coming down London Bridge that was public water, that they were going to be responsible for. And so I'm assuming all of that was worked out.
Well, what happens with any water that comes out of the London Bridge Road system, which we're not contributing to, that's something that the city will be having to work out. It's not something that the church can work out, it's not their water. So it has been, I know it's been worked on, I can't sit here and make what representations as to whether that's been solved or not, but the church will not be putting any water onto...
But the staff was feeling that the church should not be responsible for everything coming down London Bridge Road.
Right.
Correct.
I'm 100% certain that the staff, the stormwater folks are very much aware of it. It's something that they've been, among many other things, been working on. And all we're doing is trying to, you know, get to a position, and this isn't, what we're doing tonight is only making it, you know, easier and less impactful.
Right.
We're not, this isn't approving, you know, putting a shovel in the ground and start building next week. This is just making the situation a better situation, and a one that can more easily fit into, I didn't say easy, but more easily than current plan can into our subcatchment modeling.
So it's definitely a significant reduction in the original plan.
It's a huge step in the right direction.
And do you know when they're planning on construction?
Well, we haven't, we don't know. I mean, it's going, the stormwater, you know, the stormwater plan to be here, staff is indicating they think this can meet the criteria, but like a lot of other projects that come for us that are in the southern watershed areas, the getting it approved, you're still looking at a year, two years to get your site plan approval. I don't know that it's going to take that long with this one, because it has been worked on since 2021 already. I think we're pretty close to being there, but I wouldn't put any money on how quickly it'll be actually able to be shown to work.
Okay, thank you, Eddie.
Okay, do we have a motion at this point?
Just a question, because this was first approved when it was in Prince's End District, which used to include this area, so I'm familiar with this application originally. But if staff could just, I know what Mr. Burdon just said about how long it's going to take, because what's before you now is not anywhere close to the plan. They're going to have to spend a whole lot of time engineering to make sure it does not impact the adjoining property. But if someone from the staff could reassure this lady, it would certainly maybe help, because they've got a long way to go before they're going to approve this application. So if someone would address it with what the staff is going to do.
Right, so we will be evaluating the modeling for the two-year storm, 10-year storm, 100-year storm. We're also going to be looking at the perimeter drainage around the property to ensure that there's not any runoff directed toward her property, and if there's any runoff coming from her property, it's not blocked. So it will be looked at all the way around, and all of those storm, different storm events will be modeled.
I think we've been told that we have got the most stringent stormwater requirements around, so we certainly expect that it's going to be handled, so it's not going to be a problem to the adjoining property. And I think they're pretty tough.
Okay.
If I can simply add for one second, there has been a significant amount of engineering work that has been done by the church's engineers on this property over the years, but that is not to contradict what Mrs. Henley said, it's still going to take additional time, but this, we're not where we were in 2021, but it will still take additional time. Thank you.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, let's open the vote.
The vote is open. Counselor Wooten, may I have your verbal vote, please? Yes. Thank you. By a vote of 10 to 0, with Councilmember Wooten's verbal yes, this application has been approved.
Okay, now we move on to appointments.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to appoint Courtney Doucette to the Arts and Humanities Commission. Move for approval.
Okay.
Second.
All right.
One second.
Still got Grace up. Yeah, I'm getting a thing second.
By a vote of 10 to 0, you have approved the appointment as read by Vice Mayor Wilson.
Okay, at this point, is there any unfinished business? Okay, we do have some new business and a recognition. You know, as we come into the Thanksgiving season and the holiday season, we are grateful for many things. We are grateful for our city, you know, family and unity. And we're also grateful to the city council that put a lot of time and effort in, you know, to try and to take our city to, you know, a very good level. And, you know, tonight is our last meeting of the year, and two of our esteemed colleagues will be moving on, and we just wanted to give a sincere thank you and a recognition and thanks, and a gift of a Jefferson cup to remember. But once again, you know, it takes a lot of effort for our city council over years, you know, going through challenges together and things of that nature, and we are grateful for the colleagues for the contributions that they made. And at this point, I'd like to ask each one to, you know, to say words, you know, Sabrina first, and then Chris.
Sure, thank you. So I am pleased to announce that this is my last meeting with this body. My term as the District 7 representative ends December 31st. Well, it's important to note that I did not run for reelection to District 7. I decided to run for mayor to effect positive change in local government and in the city of Virginia Beach. Although I was not successful this time, over 114,000 voters did vote for a change. That's about 60%. While I am excited for the next chapter of my life, I'm honored, and I am blessed to have served these last six years, but one of the most important and poignant aspects of my tenure has been working with the community. Some very important aspects, supporting our local government or our local businesses, ensuring they had opportunities, addressing the disparity study, which is very important, and working to address homelessness in our city, caring for those who are less fortunate, advocating for our local creatives, emerging artists, and our youth have been very important to me, as well as advocating for the First Independent Citizens Review Panel. And let me just say a word about the Independent Citizens Review Panel. It's a very important panel, because it's important to our residents to have a voice when they have concerns as it relates to the police. It's an oversight body, and so it's important for residents to be a part of that process. So I encourage you, attend the meetings that happen every month, listen to what's happening, make sure that you contact your local representative to be a part of the board when openings occur. Ask to understand the appointment process, because it's important that those positions are vetted, and that we don't just have a process of just stacking the deck, but making sure the Independent Citizens Review Panel is representative of this community, and that you feel heard. So please, I encourage you, be a part of that process. I'd also like to say it's important tonight to express my gratitude to the residents of Virginia Beach, certainly for voting me into office. That was certainly very important, and I appreciate the support and the approval of citizens to serve for the last six years. I'd also like to thank the staff, because we know that this city would not run without you, and what you do every day is very important. So I thank you. I thank you for your support, my tenure here, and certainly doing your absolute best each and every day. I also want to say thank you to our public safety members for the sacrifice that you do every day. It's very important, and I appreciate that. I'd also like to thank my husband, who is here, who has supported me through the thick and the thin of this, my time on council. He's been there, he's supported me, he's attended events, and so we've done this together, so I thank you for your support. I would also just like to let folks know, I'm not going anywhere. I will be right here, serving this community, supporting our local businesses, supporting our youth, addressing issues for our homeless population, and continuing to advocate for our creative artists, emerging artists, and the like, in supporting and serving this community. And I look forward to a continued and great Virginia Beach. And so I would like to again say thank you to everyone, and I would like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a very prosperous new year. God bless you.
Thank you.[1795.75] [applause] Thank you. Thank you, my friend and colleague, Councilmember Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor Dyer. I'm going to end this turn the same way I began, and that's to first thank God for the opportunity over the last two years to serve on Virginia Beach City Council as the son of Douglas and Janice Taylor. Douglas born in Sea-Tac, and Janice, who along with her sisters, integrated King's Grand Elementary. This has truly been a dream to my great-grandmother, Charlotte, and Barry, her mother, Mary Jane Etheridge, who was the first colored person, African-American, to work at the Francis Land House in 1912. I know they're in heaven rejoicing. One of my favorite quotes is Rosa Parks, and she says, "To bring about change, you must not be afraid to take the first step. We will fail when we fail to try." It has been a true honor to serve District Eight in the city of Virginia Beach and the 44,000 residents. Although I'm supportive of 10-1, the reality is, as we know, many of the votes that we take are citywide. The oath that we take is to represent all citizens in our city, not just our district. To the staff, I know I've been difficult, but thank you. I was raised not to go with the status quo, but to speak my mind. That has been a challenge, because there is a tendency to go with the flow. But I think about my mother's and my father's words, and it's to be genuine, to be authentic, and to be who you are. To my council colleagues, thank you all for being patient with the new council member that had to jump right in. To Mayor Dyer, you have been a friend, a mentor, and I appreciate all the support. Thank you for the opportunity to serve. To my wife, Kimberly, and my children, Caleb, Kristen, and Charlotte, thank you for putting up with the long days and many nights away from home. There is no higher calling in terms of career than public service, which is a chance to make a difference in people's lives and improve the community. And so I'll end with a quote from Dennis Whately, and this is for everyone that seeks to enhance Virginia Beach and make it better. There are two primary choices in life, to accept conditions as they are and exist, or to accept the responsibility for changing them. Thank you, Virginia Beach, and God bless you all.
Thank you. Sincere thanks to both of you, and once again, continued friendship, and, you know, once again, your contributions were tremendous. We are a great city, and it takes a team to do that. And speaking of a team to do that, we have one other person we'd like to recognize as part of our team, and this is his last meeting. Frankie, 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 Frankie. Sergeant Philippone is about to become Lieutenant Philippone. He was, when we moved over here, you know, we live in a tough, challenging time, and, you know, it's, you know, politics can be a contact sport sometimes, and we need some, you know, we have the best police department around. But once again, you know, just making sure that this building, this room, is the people's room. This is the people's, you know, building one belongs to all of Virginia Beach, and to keep it safe is paramount. But at this point, we have a little parting thing, and, you know, Josh Schuman, do you have something for Frankie?
Frankie, this is so you can keep watching over us even after you've gone. I'd love to come down and give it to you. There's messages out here from everybody, so thank you for being a guide and being somebody who's kept all of us and everybody back here safe, and just being just the wonderful person you are. Congratulations.
Nothing but success. Thank you.
We all come down, we all go down for a picture with?
Okay, let's go ahead and adjourn, then we'll come down. Okay, but listen, Frankie, thank you, God bless you, and to our two colleagues, thank you, God bless you, and everybody, have a great holiday season and unity and community. Thank you.